I'd like to call an order this August 26, 2024, regular meeting of Powhatan County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Denali, can you do the pledge? And Mr. Kenny, can you do the prayer, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Request to postpone agenda items in additions, deletions, or changes in order presentation.
Much to approve.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
County Minister updates.
Yep, just a few things this evening to give you an update on. One, in the packet, you'll see the Plan RVA Rural Transportation Analysis. They're doing a survey to look at transportation options in the county. So we want to get input from the public on what the needs are and what solutions might be. Potentially things like parking ride lot. We have something like 70% of our working age population leaves the county each day. So that's a lot of cars going in and out. We currently have the Link Transit Program, but that's only for a section of the county. And that's only a grant program, a pilot program for three years. So this will help look at whether other options or what comes, what comes after that, or how does that continue? So there's a link in the packet as well as on our website to take that survey. And the survey closes October 15th. Then just to let you know some things we talked about last month. Company One Fire Station, we had the pre-construction kickoff meeting last week and planning a groundbreaking ceremony for that expansion sometime in September. So we'll put that out in the public. But good after years of planning and needs there to finally officially start that for our fire. Then we talked about library, replacing the HVAC equipment. We have a proposal in right now that we're looking at that we will probably have on your next board agenda to approve to get that going. At the library facility, we just finished the Fighting Creek Park covered bridge. But we want to make those trails eventually all ADA compliant. So right now we're working on some ramps on the edges of that bridge that we hope will be done within the next two weeks. Recently completed the school connector road between the elementary and middle school to alleviate some of the drop off and pickup traffic there. That was completed. And then one upcoming event to make everybody aware of if you aren't is our 9/11 first responders day. That officially kicks off at midnight Friday with the run, 343 lap run. But then the bulk of the public events will be the next day, Saturday, starting at 9:00 a.m. and going through 6:00 p.m. So again, that's Saturday, September 14th. And that is all I have this evening.
So we have a proclamation tonight, P-2024-08 Suicide Prevention Month. I think Mr. Hague is going to present that.
Whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 to 34 in the United States. And whereas more than 48,000 people die by suicide across the United States in each year. And whereas over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition. And whereas suicide is a significant public health issue that affects individuals of all backgrounds and walks of life. And whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas this year's theme for World Suicide Prevention Day on September 10th is changing the narrative on suicide. And whereas September is globally known as Suicide Prevention Month to raise the visibility of mental health resources in our community. And whereas we encourage all residents to take the time to recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize September as Suicide Prevention Month. And be it further proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor the lives of persons we've lost to suicide.
Thank you, Will. We have two presentations tonight. First one is from the Virginia Cooperative Extension Agency.
Hello, everybody. My name's John Few. I am the new Powhatan County Ag and National Resources Extension Agent. I just kind of wanted to give you a background of who I am and what I'm planning on doing in the near future. And just kind of let the public know they have resources that they can reach out to me if they have any questions dealing with agriculture or entomology. So a little bit about my background. My Bachelor's of Science was in agriculture at, from Virginia State University, primarily focusing on row crops, greenhouse production, and urban agriculture. So things like gardening, vegetable production, those kinds of things. Then I got my Master's at Virginia Tech in Integrated Pest Management, which is essentially a system of trying to figure out how to get rid of a pest, whether it be a weed or an insect or fungus in the most environmentally sound way, as well as working in extension, putting on public education events, both for adults and for youth who work primarily in agriculture. And as well as entomology, which is the study of insects. So a lot of my work there was on crops and protecting those crops from insects. A little bit about Powhatan's agriculture, just to let people know. Currently, or at least as far as the data taken in 2022, we have 260 farms, which is down just a little bit from 2017 to, which has had 263 farms. We're now just down a little bit from 2017 to 3,000, 30,100 acres of farmland. Out of those farmlands, just over 10,000 of it is in harvestable land. So harvestable agricultural land, which basically means that they're producing crops there and not necessarily pasture for livestock. Average size of a farm is 127 acres. And the major crops grown here are soybeans, corn, wheat, as well as having land for different ruminants, birds like chickens and turkeys, as well as producing hay. Here's just some statistics on some of the acreage out of, out of the acres that we have, the different kind of crops that we grow. So we are pretty major producing county for corn, cotton, and sorghum, as well as a few other crops. We also have orchards, a couple of serious vegetable productions, and some acre potatoes as well. It's a pretty, pretty good amount of potatoes. One of the things that I'm working with is the Agriculture Forest District and getting them, getting more and more information out there about them. If a producer or a large landowner wants to participate in it, it essentially helps protect that agriculture land and forested land from development. And there are also some potential tax benefits you can get from that. We also have a land use status, which also does provide some tax benefits. However, that you have to reapply for that every year while the AFD plan lasts for 10 years. So there are just some different benefits and takeaways you can get from using either one of those. It's really situational dependent. But that is something that we, I would like people, more producers to know about, that the AFD is here. And it could be something that they get participation in. And just for some of the personal plans I have, one would be a youth entomology club. I've done this in my previous county that I came from where I teach youth about insects, how to find them, how to make collections, how to do little projects with them. We focus primarily on what their interests are. I showed them how to go out and find insects. And just all kinds of different little interesting things that can get them interested in science or the STEM fields and hopefully some agriculture as well. Another program I would like to start is the Farm to Table Program. So working with groups like the Master Gardeners, as well as Kathy, our foreage agent, I would like to teach people how, just for a whole family, how to grow food and then actually cook with it or can. That just kind of provides them with some self-sustainability, interest in agriculture, as well as in the culinary field, and teaches the kids how to be self-sustainable, both from a gardening and land use standpoint, as well as being able to cook for themselves, which is really important, especially as more and more schools do things like home ec. Environmental skate training programs for places like, that are developed areas. This is just an option for landscape professionals to develop more environmentally friendly landscape projects and ideas. So we essentially train them on how to do this. And then if they would like to implement in their business, I also like to have a financial aspect on how to market that if they do want to implement it, and that's helpful for our environment and for their businesses. And also just kind of promote other USDA and Soil and Water District programs. We recently had a drought, so some of the producers are having some issues. And there's some disaster relief programs that will be coming out soon enough to help them with some of that issues that they have as far as crop loss and yield loss. This is just a flyer for the investigating insects, which are the soft launch for our youth entomology program. This will start in September. We actually just got approved to promote all the dates. So that will be coming out tomorrow. So you have any youth, if you work at schools or just know anybody that might be interested in learning about insects for ages eight to 12, and they get to learn about all the basics of insects, as well as participate in arts and craft, hiking, some gardening activities, as well as just other kinds of scientific adventures. We'll also be promoting Cokey Bug Fest if someone does want to go there. That's October 12th at Virginia Tech. Thank you. And if you want to contact me, this is my information.
Thank you, John. Welcome to Powhatan. Our next presentation is going to be the real estate assessment update from Commissioner Revenue Jamie Timberlake.
Good evening, everyone. See if this thing works. I always have a challenge. Oh, it did. All right, so as we talked about last year and trying to do this basically on a quarterly basis and bring you some information about the assessments and what are going on. Between January 1st and July 31st of this year, we had 195 residential sales. 13 of those were new construction. The rest of them were all existing sales. Just some statistics, important ones that I think you need to look at, like days on the market were actually down. So 22 days this year as opposed to last year was 34 days, right? Still some new listing increasing in numbers, pending sales increasing, closing sales increasing. Days on the market, like I said, down. Median sales price is up 15%, right? That's something to pay attention to. That all rolls into it. The percentage of the original list pricing, though, is actually down. Last year, for what people wanted for their house, they were actually getting a little more than 100%. That this year, the buyer is having a little more power and drawing them down maybe from that percent. But they're still not saying on the market very long, so that's an interesting. And then that median sales price is a little shocking, continues to increase. And I don't know when it'll slow down. Next slide is kind of just some trends showing the listing, putting it in a little bit more of a graph format. But we're still looking at things being just under 20%, up just under 20%. And stop me for questions as we go. I don't need to do the whole thing. So back to the days on the market, just showing that averaging, average sales price, median sales price, excuse me, not average, median sale price by thousands and how long they've been on the market. And then us compared to the region, right? So this is a little bit important to just see how we're doing. And this is MLS considers us still part of the Richmond region. So that lumps in Chesterfield, Richmond, Hanover, excuse me, not Hanover, Henrico, Goochland, and Amelia, kind of all in that same group. And we're still trending well above, not as much as each month, but it's kind of slowed down in July a little bit. But as you can see earlier in the year, when other localities or in the region were slowing down, we were still $100,000 more than that. Commercial, so as we always talk about, and we're trying to bring in some commercial to help offset our tax base and put some more burden on the businesses as opposed to the citizens carrying the entire burden. We do a really good job. I think economic development gets credit for our occupancy rate. When you look at our occupancy rate compared to the counties around us, we do much, much better. I mean, we're at a 90%, 98%. That means we're only 2% vacant. I mean, those numbers are in the double digits in every locality around us, meaning 10% or more, right? So their vacancy rate is much higher than ours. And our rent rate is just kind of on a slow incline. Nothing too drastic, but still showing a positive trend. Just giving you some example of those sales, like Starbucks, the car wash, the Flex condo. These are all the little ticks, little tick marks show where they are. The Powhatan apartments sold recently. And some office buildings we're still seeing. This is kind of a picture of all of them on one. So it's eight retail, two office. The one multifamily is the same one I'm talking about, the Powhatan apartments. And then nine other commercial vacant land sales. So I don't know if you keep up with Jerome Powell, you know, he still says that there's no chance in it coming down anytime soon, but that really hasn't affected our trend in a negative way. So it is what it is. The rates are cut, but they haven't, you know, continuing, borrowing will continue to be high, but people tend to still be doing it in Powhatan. Giving you kind of linear graph from September of last year until now and just showing the, the sales trends with like a 30-year rate for mortgages. And then just some emerging trends, not a whole lot out there than the ones I just talked about. Just a little bit of update about the office. We are back to 100% full staffed, which has been awesome, coming right into the reassessment cycle because it's going to be a busy fall, I think. And the new software is challenging, but I think it's our challenge in learning it. It's a great software, in my opinion. Has a lot more tools in it that we can use to do things like this and stratify. Because we were understaffed, we didn't get as far into it as I would like to. So we're probably just going to do a little bit more of the trending this year as far as the assessment. But next year, we'll actually start to be able to stratify things, break them out into, you know, much finer categories. So it puts more specific growth areas and less growth areas where they deserve to be as opposed to a little more of the lumping, which is what we do now. It is, it meets the state code, it's effective, but it's not truly, you know, spreading that tax burden evenly. So the more stratified we can get, the better tax assessment as far as equality will be. So I look forward to doing that next year with a full staff and here for any questions yet.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr.
Hi, Powers. Jamie, in light of all the statistics you are showing, double-digit increases, can you make any projections or give us a feeling on the assessments that you are going to be doing in terms of increase?
Sure, we'll be doing all of that as sales analysis across everything. So when you see the 20%, that's mostly new sales, brand new sales. We'll probably be somewhere in the three, three and a half is where I'd guess right now. But we'll be doing that literally the month of September so that we can have notices and all out to the public by mid-October. Appeal dates in November, go into the first year with a good number for y'all to budget with.
So three, three and a half, you feel pretty comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and again, we've just, literally just started the sales analysis in the new software, which we had to learn the software, right? So we're getting that sales analysis laid out, but we'll have good numbers by probably mid to end of September.
Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Kenny.
Hey, Jamie, one quick question. On the commercial occupancy rate, could ours be so good because we don't have as much pad space to rent as some of the other counties?
Sure, I think availability is, is got to be in that statistic if you only have so many available. But, you know, the businesses are, in some of the places that are overdeveloped, the businesses aren't interested in going there, they're coming here, so. Anything else?
Appreciate what you do, Jamie.
Yes, sir.
Great job.
Anybody give me a call.
That brings us to our first public comment period. Three minutes per individual, five minutes per group, 30-minute total time. That can be extended by the board if needed. Our first public comment period, Judy Barker. You can state your name and address when you come to the podium, please.
Judy Barker, 2315 Mary Goodwin Road, of course, here in Powhatan, Branchway Forest. Forgive me for reading this, but to stay on track, I need to. We all know that there is a need for additional income to support our infrastructure here in Powhatan County. And that we need to have the right balance of growth across all demographics in order to contribute appropriately to community services across our county. We're here as citizens today to do, to plead with you to consider opportunities for growth that are reasonable and sustainable. The kind of growth that will both maintain the lifestyle that current residents cherish and that people considering moving to county, to our county are drawn to. What we want to avoid is creating the kind of irresponsible rapid growth that other counties, including Chesterfield and Hanover, have seen, which doesn't adequately support the needs of both existing residents and new ones. These counties have experienced lack of necessary funding for roads with crumbling overcrowded roadways that result in greater traffic and dangerous, often fatal incidents. They have school systems that are currently overcrowded and are now seeing brand new schools opening with mega trailers and with teacher, staff, and busing shortages. Their environmental resources are strained and waste wa, and waste management and water supplies are compromised. In addition, the rapid influx of too many new residents has seriously exhausted these counties' human resources, including administrative, social services, and emergency services. I personally experienced what can happen when high-density housing is introduced to a small school system. Even though my school system was proactive in redrawing boundaries of our seven elementary schools, we underestimated the number of children who would attend and be added to our school where I taught and the emotional and social influences the addition of high-density environment would produce. I don't want to see a similar situation here in Powhatan. Our rural environment provides a great place to raise families. Thus, I believe the estimated number of children this current proposal will add to our local schools is vastly underestimated. And this, of course, is the property that's on 60, next to Pivot and the doctor's offices. 150 units on this size property, that's in addition to the five businesses we hope to have there, is an example of irresponsible growth. The proffers allocated for this project will not adequately address the strain on the county's infrastructure. May I finish? I just have another paragraph. Infrastructure, educational environment, and human resources. We ask that you consider a more reasonable dwelling unit number and size of residential lots, more in line with Powhatan's much-desired environmental, rural environment. This responsible growth will help ensure that Powhatan is the kind of place that those of us who already live here will continue to want to live in and those wanting to move here will continue to enjoy for years to come. We elected you as our representatives to do what is best for all of us. What we do here will set a precedent for the future Powhatan County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mike Prendergast. I get that right? And Kathy Car will be up next after that, after Mike.
My name's Mike Prendergast, 2305 Mary Goodwin Road in Branchway Forest. But I'd like to ask you to consider is with regard to Spring Branch, we've apparently gotten over 1,200 signatures on a petition regarding this project. That is a pretty significant level of interest in what happens with this project. It seems to me that granting a series of three-minute discussions about the impact of this project is not sufficient to determine whether or not this is an appropriate project for the county. There ought to be a town hall. There needs to be input from this large group of people that you get to consider before you make a decision. Because the opposition is substantial and definite. Thank you.
Terry Adcock, you're up next, after Kathy.
Powhatan Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I stand before you to express my deep concern regarding the high-density project currently underway in our community, specifically the Branch Spring Project. While I recognize the potential for economic growth and development, we must prioritize the well-being of our residents and the integrity of infrastructure. The project is not merely about brick and mortar. It represents a significant shift in our community's landscape and more importantly, the impacts to our infrastructure. Increasing the population density will add further strain on Route 60 and to our essential services. We must ask ourselves, is Powhatan community infrastructure truly prepared for these projects? The impact to our water supply cannot be overlooked. Adding hundreds of new residents into an area that is zoned commercial and has been on the comprehensive plan as business gateway is not just irresponsible, it is reckless. What concerns me most is the apparent prioritization of politics and profits over the real needs for the Powhatan people. It seems that in the rush to approve this project, we have lost sight of what truly matters, the residents who call this place home. Their voices and concerns should be heard and should be addressed. We must demand transparency and accountability for those driving this project. Are we allowing developers to dictate the future of our community? Are we sacrificing the long-term sustainability for short-term financial gains? This is not just about economic development. It is creating a safe, livable, sustainable environment for our community. I urge this board to take a step back and reconsider the serious infrastructure impacts of this project. Engage with the community. You do, we do have ideas if you listen, and please stop calling our concerns tyranny. Please be our advocates for solutions that prioritize smart growth that are sustainable and puts Powhatan citizens before profits and politics. Thank you.
Karen Rizmeyer, you're after Terry.
Terry Adcock, 5719 Cartersville Road. Darlene Boland and I have been realtors in Powhatan each for over 30 years. And we're some of the two top-selling agents in the county. And we are both highly opposed to Spring Branch. You asked why, and I'm sure the person that's doing it is asking, are they idiots? This would make them a lot of money, yes. But money's not what counts to us in Powhatan. We 100% support our comprehensive plan. And our comprehensive plans with citizens and former board members spent hundreds of hours are formulating. And now we're hearing that it's just a guideline. Sure, it is a guideline, but in any business that I have ever worked with, a guideline is something you should follow and you can make slight deviations. 150 homes, four per acre, is not a slight deviation in anybody's book. So I think this is something that we need to realize that the, our comprehensive plan says this is gateway business. Businesses are supposed to be there, not residential. Thank you.
Kathy Brundage is after Karen.
I'm Karen Rizmeyer, 3523 Richards Road, Powhatan, Virginia. One of the questions in your workshop with the hired planner was how do you define rule? And then someone actually compared our rule to New Jersey rule, which I actually thought was absurd. If you want to define rule for any area, all you need to do is look at the county's comprehensive plannings or plan. The definition on the internet was, quote, "It is an order process that deter-" that determines community goals and aspirations in terms of community development." So following the comprehensive plan will keep Powhatan rule. This high-density development that is being proposed on Route 60 is not designated on the comprehensive plan for this type of development. If the board's goal is to have high-density housing, then we do actually have a real village center, which is designated for this type of development, but would need to be on a smaller scale in order not to use up all our water, sewage, and most of our school capacity to do so. I believe all five board supervisors ran on the campaign promise of keeping Powhatan rule. Some of you may try to change the definition of rule to try and justify your campaign promises, but the will of the people is the comprehensive plan, and that is what determines rule for Powhatan. You were elected to represent your district. You are supposed to be acting on behalf of your citizens in your district. If you're not, then this sends a clear message to all of Powhatan citizens. We do not have the infrastructure for 150 high-density homes on Route 60. Estimated cost of upgrading the Fighting Creek wastewater treatment plant is $6 million. A new school, $30 million. Then you have the traffic issues. Who's going to pay for a light? It will be a disaster without one. And then on top of all of that, the new proposed community center, yet another $20-plus-million-dollar project, which will probably put the YMCA out of business. Do you honestly think this development will bring in this type of money? As a business major, the answer is no. It will deplete more than it will bring in, and that cost will fall on citizens, which means even higher taxes. Then there is water. You cannot put a price on that. My well in Branchway Forest had to be dug out two times in order to produce adequate water for our home. Are you prepared for lawsuits when people's wells go dry? Have any studies been done on putting in a new commercial well, which will be required if this is approved? How will this impact nearby residents' wells? Where will this well be placed? If you cannot answer all of these questions, then this should not even be a consideration. No one is against obtainable homes, but it needs to be put where it is designated on the comprehensive plan and on a scale that is reasonable. Thank you very much.
Good evening, and thank you for the time tonight. My name is Kathy Brundage, 1938 Woodbury Mill Road here in Powhatan, District 1. 14 years ago, my husband was offered a job here in Virginia. We spent six months searching around the Richmond area looking for a community that we could call home. We were introduced to Powhatan, and we read the comprehensive plan cover to cover. The plan was a promise that the will of the people was to keep Powhatan rural, friendly, God-first, and family. The comprehensive plan is the will of the people of Powhatan. The rezoning issues that are before the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors, they're not in line with the promises that are held in the comprehensive plan. We, the people, want our voices heard, both through the comprehensive plan and through the voices that you are hearing tonight and from the emails that I know that you are all receiving. Tonight, you have heard about waters, schools, safety concerns, infrastructure. So I'm asking you to hold to the will of the people in Powhatan and say no to these high-density rezoning requests. Powhatan, unite. Thank you.
Don Rizmeyer. And then Laura Majeski's after Don.
Can I yield my three minutes to other people? I like what they're saying. And be in the second public comment period?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll stick around.
Laura Majeski, 3502 Richards Run, Powhatan, Virginia, Branchway Forest. I don't see that I can improve on everything that you all have heard. So my question for you is, why were you voted into office? What's your job? Your job is to listen to us. That's all we need. We need you all to listen to us. We don't need the high-density buildings that are proposed in Branch Springs. We don't need them. In approximately, I want to say 10 years ago, board of supervisors said that there would be development. We recognize that. The development was proposed to be contained within the eastern limits of Powhatan. And if you think about it, that makes sense, because those people who will move to Powhatan, if they're still working in Richmond, they're still going to have to be able to have a shorter commute into Richmond. So keeping that type of development in the eastern portion of the county made sense. I don't know where that got derailed, but it got derailed big time. We're in the central portion of this county. We are not high-density. We are not the village. We can deal with retail. We understand that there will be development. We get it. We're not saying, don't build anything. We're saying be responsible with it and listen to the concerns. Fully respect and support the idea of a town hall meeting. But if you're not going to do that, then at least follow the comp plan. Because those of us who have watched the comp plan be developed and supported that development over the years and the board of supervisors who were in charge of helping to develop it, that's why it was made. If we didn't want to go by with that comp plan, then why put it in place? Why have it? You need to listen. Listen to your constituents. We've asked you all to represent us. We need you all to listen. That's all I have to say.
Michelle Stennett. Darlene Boland after Michelle.
Hello, Michelle Stennett, 2889 Cruz Lane, not Branchway Forest. But I do want to ride on the coattails of everyone else. They've done a fabulous job. High-density housing in Powhatan, the current infrastructure cannot support this. This much growth too fast is a disaster. We're just going to cross our fingers and hope that it all works out in the end? Or are we going to... We need to grow Powhatan together first by establishing reliable water sources that don't rely on another county turning the knob off. And then we need to focus on jobs and then high-density housing is needed. That's all I'm going to say on that, because I think everybody's done a fantastic job. So I'm going to go ahead and go to the data center. I had an interesting conversation today with the VDOT worker on Page Road. I went to tell you that I appreciate y'all doing a 24-hour vehicle flow study on Page Road to determine the volume and the standard weight of the vehicles that leave Luckstone and illegally go down Page Road to use as a cut-through. The VDOT worker says that he doesn't understand why they're only doing a 24-hour study, because the Virginia standard is a five-day study. So while we're doing a 24-hour study, apparently Luckstone knows about it because not the first dump truck went up and down Page Road today for the first time in 27 years. So obviously, they know about it. Last week or the week before, my mom called the sheriff's office for a legal definition of what the no-truck, no-through-truck-traffic sign meant. And the deputy stated that the trucks loaded with thousands of pounds of product, if they were to exit Luckstone at the light at Walmart like they're supposed to, turn east onto Melothean Turnpike, drive three miles to the eastern entrance of Page Road, then turn left crossing two lanes of westbound traffic running 55 to 70 miles per hour, is unsafe considering the size and the weight of the vehicle. They are slow to accelerate, and they are slow to start when they have this much tonnage on them. This leads the impact for serious, if not deadly, accidents so increases. And our cut is only going to affect how they cross over. So we do need to look at that, if that is the plan for it coming. So my big concern with Luckstone finding out today that there was going to be a 24-hour traffic study is that... And I hope that I'm incorrect, but I feel that if Powhatan County would manipulate a study to represent invalid data to the citizens, that they have zero of our best interests at heart. So today, I'm going to challenge all the residents on Page Road. Turn your Ring cameras around, focus them on the streets so that we can collect our own data, so that we can compare them to the VDOT 24-hour data that they are manipulating. Thank you for your time. I also urge you... Sorry, my notes are out of order. As far as the data center goes, if we deny this data center request in five years, there's going to be another one. It's going to have more profit, more proffers, more of what we want, more sexy for us, residents that have to put up with it. So let's wait for the JLRX study, which is the General Assembly mandated study, and let's do the right thing for Powhatan County. I appreciate you letting me exceed my time. Thank you.
No notes. Darlene Boland, 630 Petersburg Road. I want to add, the extension agent had the number of farms that had been lost. That was in 2022. There are four, just in my district alone, since then that are gone, just to update that. I don't know when they'll come out with an updated figure, but that's just in my district. And three of them are within five miles of Air Farm. So it's really discouraging. And a lot of times, maybe we shouldn't dwell so much. We want to keep Powhatan rule at the same time keeping it agricultural, so we can still have farms here. And because of the way it's looking, we're losing more and more every year. That's kind of sad. So everybody here has said pretty much what I was going to say. I just really want to reiterate the fact that we did zone this back to Commerce Center back in the fall with the knowledge and intentions that it was going to be used for commercial and that not another rezoning application was going to come up for residential. That's just beyond belief that that is happening right now. So it's in the gateway business, as somebody already mentioned, that it be commercial. I don't know why we need to deviate from that. The courthouse is where village growth is designated to go, and that's where it should stay. And another thing is, more than one person has mentioned to me that this is a done deal. I don't know how that's possible when you have to go through the process. You have to go through the planning department. You've got to go through the planning commission and then the board. So how can it be a done deal? That disturbs me that I'm hearing that from more than one person. So I don't know why. But anyway, just like everybody else said, please think about this. There's no hurry to do this type of development in Powhatan at all. I don't understand. It's beyond my comprehension why it's even being considered. It really is. So thank you very much.
Carl Swindeman.
My name is Carl Swindeman. I have a comment about sidewalks. Okay, the question I have is that they're going to talk about development standards along Route 60 throughout Route 60 in Powhatan County. Can the board supervisors ask the planning commission to actually put some teeth to their zoning codes that actually require sidewalks or bike paths along Route 60? Because even in the village of Powhatan, it's kind of really vague when you try to... Because an example of this is, in Flat Rock, there was a developer of a mechanic shop where they're going to put in a sidewalk, a 200-foot section of sidewalk, and leave room for one. But the kicker is that there's a bigger zoning case involving the sheets and a self-storage container place, which, if they include a sidewalk, would create a sidewalk that's almost 1,000 feet long along Flat Rock. And my question is, could they actually put teeth to the planning code where it says, okay, a developer wants to put a new store in Long Route 60 or a shop, they have to put a bike path in that's set back 25 feet from the traffic, and the sidewalk has to be a minimum of, you know, five feet or 10 feet wide, and they have to have a minimum of trees along it, like a buffer of trees to protect the pedestrians from the traffic? Because what I don't like about Powhatan right now is I'm afraid that if they don't put a sidewalk proffer with teeth on it, we're going to wake up, 10 or 30 years are going to pass, and we're going to turn to Jeff Davis Highway or eastern Chesterfield, where they didn't build sidewalks in the 1970s, and now they're spending millions and millions of dollars to have to re-renovate everything to adapt it to sidewalks, because the people way back when did not expect the area to get built up. And I just think that Powhatan needs to start adding some teeth. And the same thing goes for the village of Powhatan. The village of Powhatan is my favorite sidewalk system because it's rural. It has nice grass. It has nice buffers of grass from the traffic and trees. And I think that Powhatan needs to amend their... They need to add to the zoning code that the village sidewalk should be the standard beyond the village and around Powhatan, where they have buffers of trees and landscaping versus the stuff where in Chesterfield you have a sidewalk that's like four feet wide next to traffic moving 60 miles an hour. I just think Powhatan needs to update their zoning codes.
Yes, sir. That's the last person I have on the sheet, but therefore I will allow... We still have time. If you would like to speak, we have five minutes before the board can adjust the time over 30 minutes. And anybody speaking in the second public comment period, please sign in at the back table, please. It's been in place since the first board member we had. Okay, that's the second public comment period. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. ... Thank you, Mr. Flung. I didn't know we had to sign in. I've come to meetings for 25 years. Haven't been here, but I'll try to remember to do that next time. Thank you. Everything everybody said tonight has a whole lot of validity to it. And I'll get into that as we go through this process in the next couple of months. The most important job of a board of supervisor member is not to worry about the real estate taxes, not to worry about how many high-density houses we can put up down 60, not to worry about we only got 2% commercial that's not filled. It's a whole lot of things. The most important job of any elected official is to worry about the well-being of their citizens. And that goes even to the point of their well-being, of where they live and how they live, not to be destroyed and disturbed. Now, I can tell you, speaking personally, it's a whole lot of people in Branchway Forest. I'm one of the young ones. That's hard to believe. I'm 63. Be 63 years old. There's a whole lot of people in there that are older, moved in there, figured they were going to be living there, peace and quiet. Yes, they knew it was going to be some commercial development there eventually. But according to comprehensive plan, it ain't supposed to be anything else. But I'm not here to talk about that. You'll hear plenty of that from me in the future. You've got people living there, taking care of family members, have dementia, Alzheimer's, heart disease, mental illness. They're having to get involved in this kind of crap. That's what it is, is crap. I'm keeping it clean for you. And you know, all this does is add stress, stress, stress to people's lives. I shouldn't have to be up here right now dealing with this. I should be at home with my wife, who's had a stroke. But no, I'm up here with this. Why'd she have a stroke? Stress is one reason, but we'll get into that. That's fine. But I ask all five of y'all up there, every one of you, to think. We have one that I think I'm wasting my breath speaking to that says if you get up to speak, your mind that doesn't agree with his, it's tyranny. You know what tyranny is? The King of England found out what it was years ago. And the people rose up, and if any of y'all history buffs of this county, remember 22618, 22618. Go back and watch the video of that board of supervisors meeting that night. I think that was small-scale to what's coming. People are tired, sick and tired of going through this. So I ask every one of y'all, open your hearts and your minds, to think about what's important and maybe hold a town hall meeting and listen to your constituents and say, "I'm not going to listen to them or talk to them because they don't agree with me." Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Hold on one second. We have to take a vote first. Hold on. I get a motion to extend the public comment period.
Is the sign-up sheet...
Where are our 30-minute time limit right now?
Is the sign-up sheet for the second public comment period filled?
I do not know. I don't have it. Katie can look.
Sir, this isn't the Reichstad or the Kremlin. There's not a Nazi flag hanging outside.
I understand, Kate. We still have our...
I'd like to make a motion to extend, please.
I second that, and we have to have a unanimous vote. Roll call.
Mr. Donati?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mrs. Morissette?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Want to add what? Oh, one away. Mr. Fishman, I call him, what he said. When I grew up in New Jersey, from the 50s throughout 60s, early 70s, my parents not one time had to go to a school board meeting, a township committee meeting, or any other official meeting because of some unwanted project they were trying to shove down the neighbors' throats. Not once. So now I move here and I'm told embrace the rural concept and everything will be great. So I embrace the rural concept. Next thing I know, we have this tidal wave of high-density projects that are sweeping over Powhatan, have seemed to come from nowhere. Let me tell you about utilities and infrastructure. I spent my whole life as environmental engineer, you know, dealing with water treatment, sewage treatment. And this development will exceed the capacity of Aqua America. It will exceed the capacity for water. It will exceed the capacity of wastewater treatment plant, and it will exceed the fire flow capacity. I spoke to a former fireman, well, will always be a fireman, Mr. Donati. And he related to me, there was one occasion where they had, uh, two occasions where they had to fight a fire in the vicinity of the Food Lion on Academy Road. They pumped the system dry because there wasn't enough storage capacity to fight a fire. There still isn't enough storage capacity to fight a fire. And we want to embrace new developments? What, what, you already have in the quay. Do people know what in the quay means? Already approved? So you have, Mr. Potter has assisted living facility planned for the rear of Scottville. Alls he have to do is put a site plan in. Now, I understand that he's talking about 60 cottages for assisted living back there. That's already approved. I, uh, these, and one, another one of his projects are the 10 triplexes and four commercial properties along Route 13. That's already in the quay, in the queue. And then I see there's a 2025 project for, to add all these village buildings, surrounded this building, including this building, into the sewer system. So that puts it, just those projects alone use up all the capacity. Little known, uh, little known what was planned for in front of me, the 37 acres. I've never seen such lack of planning as far as infrastructure in my entire adult working career. It's, it's, it's beyond belief. And here it is happening right now. Bye. Thank you for giving me the three minutes.
Good evening, board members. My name's Cindy Booton. I live on Free Bridge Road. I've been a resident of the county for 34 years. I was very active in the comprehensive plan work that was done in this county. And I'm very frustrated that you all are going to break a promise to the citizens of this county when we spent so much time and effort with that comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan says two acre minimum, five acre averaging. And I will say that Mr. Potter and all of his dense proposals been approved. He's the perfect example of why you don't start down that road to start with. The village used to be a quaint place. Now, Mr. Potter is overwhelming it with his buildings. He's ruining the, what would you say, the ambiance of the place? And I'm tired of it. This is one man undoing something we all loved. We don't need to start down the road with this four houses per acre, not in Powhatan. If they, if a developer wants to do that kind of crap, he can do it in Chesterfield. He can do it in Henrico. He can do it in Hanover. It is not wanted here. It's obvious because that's what's in the comprehensive plan. So I beg you, turn this down. Don't open the door because it will never close to this kind of unwanted development. I don't want it. I fought against it ever since I've been here. And I'm definitely not alone. I was, my signature's not on the 1,200. You can add me to it and lots of my friends who weren't aware that was going around. We don't want that kind of development. The comprehensive plan says we don't want that kind of development. Powhatan doesn't have the infrastructure. You think about building the infrastructure before you let this mess go in. Chesterfield County is a perfect example of overdevelopment before you've got the facilities to handle it. We should be able to learn that lesson from looking just east of us. I hope you all are smart enough to do that and turn this down flat. The last thing I want to say is I'm one of those people that doesn't have internet service at my house. I use the library. I love the library. But the library needs new computers. Those computers have been there ever since the library opened, and they were used when they came in. By God, get some new computers for the library for all of us who use it.
Good evening. I'm Brady J. Phelps. I'm a retired college professor. I am one of the over 1,200 people who signed petition opposing the Spring Branch high-density development. I don't want to take up too much time. There might be people here speaking in favor. I don't know, are there anyone here? How, how long is that? How's that petition coming? I'm only one member, I guess, of the tyranny that Mr. Powers has been complaining about. I've only lived here three years or so. My first interactions with members of the BOS was when I met with Mr. Donat Donati. Mr. Donati impressed me as a reasoned and thoughtful public servant. Thank you for meeting with me. I wish the rest of my remarks could be that pleasant. When Jesus arrived in Jerusalem, he cast the tax collectors and the money changers out of the temple, accusing them of turning the temple into a den of thieves. I won't go that far, but something is not right here. As Lincoln said in his Gettysburg Address, government is supposed to be of the people, by the people, for the people, not of the well-connected, by the well-connected, for the well-connected. I haven't lived here very long, but neither of you, Mr. Powers, you represent me. I haven't lived here long enough to have any right to tell people what's best for them. But, Mr. Powers, you are showing your hubris by telling us what you think is best for us. You do not have a mandate to tell us what's best for us. Please leave our quiet neighborhood alone. In fact, I forgot to tell you where I live. 3491 Richards Run and Braith Forest Way. We do not want to have to dig deeper wells. We want to be able to walk safely. We want to know our neighbors. Please leave our neighborhood alone. Thank you.
Anyone else for first public comment period? Not seeing one, I'm going to close first public comment period and continue on. If you'd like to speak during the second public comment period, please sign it up in the back. Consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
I can motion to approve.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
New appointments.
All right, we have two appointments this evening. One is a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, two applications have been submitted. One is the current member of that body who's interested in reappointment. Uh, and when you make the recommendation of appointment, one correction, the packet we have, uh, the appointment goes through September. It actually needs to expire August 31st, 2029.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Powers?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Latham to, uh, take the position, uh, with, on the BCA.
All in favor?
Aye.
Think we need a roll call.
Mr. Donati?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mrs. Morissette?
Nay.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Nay.
Uh, and then the second is Economic Development Authority, EDA Board Liaison. Um, so this is something you all started this year on the Planning Commission, having a representative on that body. Um, so, uh, EDA is really the only one that you don't have representation on. So I think you all had discussed interest. Uh, staff thinks it's a good idea to appoint one of your own, um, on that would be a non-voting member, but, excuse me, somebody to attend the meetings and, and kind of just provide a conduit between the EDA and board members. Mr. Chairman?
Please go. Mr. Donati, were you still interested in that?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that District One Supervisor Bill Donati be appointed as our BCA liaison.
EDA.
EDA.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Donati.
Uh, our one old business item tonight. So, um, as we've been talking about through our CIP Capital Improvement Program process, uh, there's a number of capital needs, uh, projects, um, over the, the 10-year horizon. Uh, most of those will be done and planned through the regular ongoing budget process, which for fiscal year '26 will be starting here, uh, in the not-so-distant future. Uh, but there are a couple of school projects identified that, uh, were more time-sensitive. Uh, one, uh, unlike some of our other facility schools, a lot of this work can only happen during the summer when students are out of the building. For example, uh, high school HVAC, you can only really be doing that work when school's not in session. Uh, as well as just the, the significantly long lead times to order equipment like that and how long it's taking, uh, causes us to look at doing something, uh, in this fiscal year currently. Uh, so we've looked at all of those and with schools, and you all kind of pare them down to what we believe are the, uh, three most critical time-sensitive projects, uh, which are replacement of the high school HVAC equipment, uh, elementary school HVAC equipment, and then demolition of some of the unused wing of the Pocahontas Landmark Center, or PLC, that's, uh, degrading and not being used. Uh, so we have our financial advisors here tonight, Davenport, to talk through some potential borrowing options, uh, both interim and, uh, permanent finance options so that we could get the funding available to start those projects on time, uh, and not have that aged infrastructure continue and, and put it at risk that we would have a failure, uh, at HVAC during, uh, school year. We want to get ahead of that along with schools.
Very good, Mr. County Administrator and, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Kyle Laps with Davenport. Nice to see you, um, as always. We appreciate being here. Um, to the county administrator's point, we have a presentation that I think will go up on the screen here in a moment. We'll walk you through and answer any questions as you go. But I think, um, to Brett's commentary there, it's really a follow-on of what we've started in the springtime period and through really kind of the spring, summer with that multi-year capital planning that's part and parcel of your budget process. And so we'll talk about that, um, and again, specific to schools. In terms of background on page number one, um, again, just a little bit of an update and we'll get to the school financing. But, uh, just a little update for the board and for the public. Um, you may recall, uh, in the springtime, we had also identified an opportunity to refinance existing county debt for savings purposes. And so just want to bring back to you the information that did indeed work. It was very successful. Um, the county saved about $740,000 in interest costs by virtue of that refinancing that happened this summer, uh, through the Virginia Resource Authority Pool Program. So not necessarily a topic for tonight's discussion, but just want to bring that up in the context of maximizing what you're able to do with your dollars and that refinancing going simply from a higher rate to a lower rate and saving interest cost in the process. Um, so really at the bottom of the page here, again, uh, thinking about multi-year CIP, the county's had a history of doing that, thinking in a multi-year process. And so we're just talking about a portion of that tonight, specific to schools. Uh, we'll give you just a little bit of an overview in terms of interest rates as we talk about financing or borrowing for capital projects. When the county does that, what you're doing is really long-term capital projects. And so anytime the county borrows money, we're not borrowing for short-term operational needs. We're really borrowing for long-term investments in the capital assets. Um, and so what that means is that when we borrow on a tax-exempt basis for those infrastructure projects, uh, what we see here on the screen is a graph of those tax-exempt interest rates over history. Um, and as was demonstrated just recently without refinancing, um, interest rates continue to be favorable in terms of the ability to go finance those, uh, school projects over either short-term or long-term. We'll talk about two different options there. Uh, but we do have a very favorable interest rate environment for purposes of borrowing, again, uh, for those capital projects. Uh, the flip side of that, and we've seen a lot of this in about the last two years or thereabouts, is that short-term interest rates in terms of when the county's fund balances, when your reserves are invested by the treasurer, those are earning very substantial, uh, interest earnings that help benefit the general fund and take some pressure off of the expenditures. And so, um, another element of why we would think about financing now relative to the time periods is given where rates are, we should be able to finance, meaning borrow, at a rate that's lower than we're able to have the cash on hand invested in the county. So basically what we call that is positive arbitrage, meaning the cash in the bank is actually making more than the interest cost on the loan. Um, and so another concept here that's important as we think about the timing of borrowing, uh, for any of these capital projects. Um, page number four, just a little bit of a refresher in terms of the county's overall CIP. Uh, we mentioned this, this is straight from the adopted, uh, budget and CIP, nothing new here. Uh, what we're really doing tonight is taking that kind of green highlighted box there that says bond school, and we're looking at just a component of that. So we keep in mind the overall plan, that's important to keep in mind, kind of the big picture. Uh, but really the topic for this evening is how we move forward with a portion of the projects within that school's component. Um, on page number five, you see a breakout of those projects. Um, as county administrator mentioned, these are all, uh, critical school rehab and renovation types of projects, uh, whether it's HVAC, um, a little bit of demolition on the Pocahontas Landmark Center, um, and some additional HVAC on the Pocahontas Elementary. So we're seeing a lot of this sort of across the state and across the region as we do our work. A lot of these schools, as they were built maybe 23 years ago, uh, they were reaching the end of their useful life with the HVAC, with the roof, so forth and so on. And so that's what you see here on the page. Again, identified by the school board and within your, meaning the board CIP. Uh, that totals about $8.1 million. Um, and so we'll talk about really two different ways we could go about financing that, uh, in the relatively short term. Uh, the first is we call permanent financing, which would basically mean we would go out, uh, in this timing to, uh, banking institutions, whether it be local banks, regional banks, national banks, do a competitive bidding of that for a permanent, basically 20-year type of financing. Um, the second option we have, and we can have both of these options available going forward. You don't have to make a decision tonight, um, is what we call interim financing. And so interim financing, maybe if you've ever built a home and you've gotten a construction loan, very similar concept. We would borrow the dollars on, we call an interim basis to allow time to basically understand what the final project cost is, understand maybe what next year's budget in terms of FY '26 looks like, understand what other capital projects are needed in the future to be combined with that, and then be able to decide how that permanent financing looks, but not until we know a couple more things in terms of how the budget looks, the project costs, so forth and so on. Um, one of the advantages of doing that interim financing in the short run is it's less budgetary impact in both this fiscal year and in FY '26. So it's a little bit longer ramp up, gives you some ability as you work through your FY '26 budget, probably in your FY '27 budget, to really understand what the economy looks like, understand the project costs and how these projects fit within the overall aggregate, uh, of your CIP. Uh, and so with that said, just again, a little bit more breakout on the interim financing. We just break out a little bit more just because it's probably, uh, more nuanced relative just going straight to what we call permanent financing. Uh, but basically it's an ability to do a three-to- But basically, it's an ability to do a three- to five-year, interest-only loan that would have very flexible prepayment provisions and would allow you as a county, whether it's maybe probably a year, two years from now, to be able to take out and permanently finance that loan at your discretion based upon what the budget looks like and what the CIP looks like in the future. So a lot of the rationale here is it provides the greatest amount of flexibility to the board in terms of thinking about the future. Anytime we talk about this, we always start with, what does the existing debt profile of the county look like? And this, again, is right from what we did in the springtime, always understanding what that is before we build sort of new components on top of it. So this page here shows existing county debt. Again, this is all fixed rate, so when the county borrows money, it looks very much like a mortgage, fixed rates, paid annually in terms of principal and interest installments. And you can see what that paydown looks like on the left-hand side. You can see it's roughly level, a little bit of a decline over the next several years. Importantly, let's point to the table here on the right-hand side. The county pays off about 85% of its principal in the next 10 years. And so as you think about sort of the life cycle of a CIP, you think about the life cycle of investments, you're paying off as a county about 85% of the principal amount of your aggregate debt over the next decade. If you compare that to your typical residential mortgage, your typical mortgage, you're paying off probably 25% of the principal over a 10-year time period. So you are paying off the principal quickly, which frees up capacity for future projects. It means you're not burdening future generations with the principal component of that outstanding debt. So we'll talk in the next couple of pages, you know, kind of tease this a little bit in terms of two different ways to think about the financing, whether it's on a long-term, meaning permanent basis on the left-hand side, an interim financing basis on the right-hand side. Really, the primary difference is, do we want to lock into principal and interest payments now? That's a permanent financing. Or do we want to give some ability to get started on the projects, design them, understand what the cost is, understand how it fits with the CIP, give you some more flexibility? That's the interim financing on the right-hand side of the equation. Again, you as a board, you don't need to make that decision this evening. We can go get bids for both of those, bring them back and let you see and understand those before you'd have to make that sort of final determination, again, if that's the way you'd like to go. We'll give you just a little bit of a comparison in terms of what the payment structure might look like. I'll tell you right now, as we look at this, we've used higher-than-current market estimate, yeah, estimates to put these pages together. So we're purposely trying to be as conservative as possible in terms of looking at the estimated debt service payments. But basically, you can see a comparison there on the left-hand side, there that box that shows the permanent financing. The first thing you'll notice, it goes quicker to full principal and interest. And so from a budgetary perspective, there's more of an impact in the FY '26 time period, FY '27. It's a more direct and upfront impact. On the right-hand side, in terms of interim financing, if you compare maybe the FY 2026 payment, it is rather substantially lower by about $300,000 in these estimates. So really, what it's giving is some time to, again, see how the tax base evolves, see how the economy evolves before you would lock into full permanent interest, excuse me, principal and interest payments. And so in the aggregate, if you look at that payment structure, it's about $670,000 on the left-hand side, $690,000 on the right-hand side. Those are just estimates right now. We'll be able to bring you back real bids. But like we've done in the spring, if you compare that to the value of the real estate tax rate, that's about $1.25 pennies, plus or minus, on the real estate tax rate. So it's a very simplified way of looking at that. But again, knowing that in the FY '26 budget, you'll have a number of different variables and levers you can pull. So it doesn't necessarily mean that the tax rate will have to go up by $1.25 pennies to do this. Just this equates it to if that was the only revenue source you had to make the debt service payments. In reality, if you get to '26 budget, you'll be able to see where the tax base growth is, you'll be able to see where other revenue growth is. We'll go look at the decline in the debt profile and really understand where that might fit in. But for discussion, just wanted to give you an order of magnitude. If the only revenue source you had was additional real estate tax revenues, it's about $1.25 pennies in that range. On page 10, and I'll pause after this page and just see if any questions and address any of those. But from a time-scheduled perspective, again, if the will of the board is to move forward with this in the short run, what we would propose doing is during the month of September and October, go out and do that competitive bidding process. So we can go do that, does not obligate you to move forward with anything. It basically would give us what we sometimes call the hunting license to go out, get those bids, bring them back to you as a board, let you see those and understand what the actual interest rates are before you needed to move forward. We'd basically do that in September and October, have those bids back in the early October time period and be back before you. The thought right now would be late October, your October 28th board meeting. But again, that can all be done, doesn't obligate you to move forward with anything at this point. But we can go get those bids, understand exactly what the bids are from the banks and bring that back to you before you need to make a decision on moving forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Good, Mr. Powers.
On page, your page four, ours 252.
Mm-hmm.
FY '25, Bond School is 10.1. How does that compare to the 8.1 that we're talking about?
So the 8.1 is a, it's a sub-component that I think was, was the board's priorities amongst that, that 10.1. So it's purposely the very specific projects that we were given as the priority.
There's something in the 10 that's not included, obviously, then in the eight.
Yeah, Mr. Powers, there was, we, the 10 included some other things. For example, I think we took out alarm system upgrade, replacing kitchen equipment, stadium boxes.
I remember all, yeah.
Things that we think would be important, but could be done in regular FY '26, aren't necessarily as, as timing critical as the roof.
Okay. On page 256, your page eight, just, why three years for interim financing?
The thought with three years.
About three years.
There's nothing magical about it, but the thought, by the time you design these projects, go construct the projects, there always seems to be hiccups in your construction project now, so we like to give a little bit of contingency on the backend. And so practically speaking, adding some contingency on the backend, that usually ends up being about three years. If we got a bid, we'll probably really ask for like a three and a five-year, just to kind of get a range of what those options would look like. But that's generally the, the idea behind three years. Takes about a year to kind of get designed and built. You have a little issue and things like that, just gives a little bit of flexibility to you as a board in terms of when that permanent financing would be paid off or taken out.
Okay, on, on your page nine, in 2028, you said that it was going to be three-year, three-years interim financing. It, it appears that there's more, there's four years there.
So the only difference there is whether you account 2025, where, you know, the, the year we're in. So, yeah, so your fiscal years and calendar years run a little bit different. So that last year in 2028, fiscal year 2028, is really about three years from now on a calendar year basis.
And we, we are assuming that those amounts, 188, 376 twice, and 403, we're going to pay interest only because it's interim financing, correct? Can we pay that out of operational cash flow? You're projecting that, so there'd be no, no requirement to increase taxes to meet those interest payments?
Well, that's, that's what we're saying. I think that, that bullet point on the left there is important whereby if you assume that we, we didn't have any extra sort of operational cash flow, it'd be about $1.25.
Worst case.
Worst case, that's right. That's, I think that's exactly the right term, worst case. I think as you get to your FY '26 budget, there's a number of different variables that would come together in that FY '26 budget that would ultimately dictate what that impact really is, but worst case.
If we were to enjoy 3%, 3.5%, as, as Mr. Timblich mentioned, are you, Charlotte, you and, and, and Davenport projecting that we would be able to take care of those interest payments out of operational cash flow?
You'd probably be close. We haven't run it specifically, but you'd probably be close. If you go back to what we did in the spring, if you recall that, we, we ran it at kind of a 3% growth rate.
Right.
And that certainly helped by all means, and you may be able to take care of this without a tax rate increase. And if, as we kind of move forward here, again, if it's what the board would like to do, we can run some more specifics by the time we come back in October.
All right. Last question, at least in this section, and I should know the answer, but I don't. On your page seven, I'm to interpret that we have $105 million worth of debt currently?
You have, you have 88 million in principal, and then the interest component of that is about 17 million for total debt service payments.
So our exposure is 105.
Yeah, that's right. That's, that's correct. And the vast majority of that is principal. And again, getting back to the concept of when the county does borrow, you're borrowing for things like buildings and infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure that lasts a long time. So oftentimes, we get asked, why would you go borrow for those things? And the reality is, they end up benefiting citizens over multiple decades. And so borrowing helps to spread the cost of those assets over the time period by which they're used and taxpayers enjoy them.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
So if we decided to do fiscal year '25 and '26 at the same time, we're roughly talking about 27.8, $27.8 million, correct?
Oh, correct. Am I looking on the right page, Mr. Kenny, in terms of?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, that would be your page four, our page 252, because we got the bonds at 10.1, and then if we, fiscal year '26 is going to be 12.5, 22. So the interim financing assumptions that are on your page eight, would those same terms apply if we decided to do both years, borrow on both years? The 27 million instead of the 8.1?
They, we could combine this into a larger financing if that's, if that's the question. I may not entirely understand the question, Mr. Kenny. Is, is the question if we do more as opposed to 8 million?
Rather than put it off, we decide to do both '25 and '26 at the same time, get the schools what they need, get it over with, and fund the whole, and borrow the whole $27 million. Does the same interim financing, interest payments fix rate? I mean, I'm sure the interest payments would go up because we're borrowing more, but would we, would the terms be as favorable?
The terms would probably be in the same range, they would. It's a much larger financing if we were to go borrow those dollars at once. I think another aspect of, of thinking through that is the timing of when those dollars would really be spent. And so you can borrow on a tax-exempt basis as a county. There's a lot of rules and laws around how you do that that are set up by the tax code. And so what the tax code really says is you need to have a reasonable expectation that you're going to really spend the money you borrow on a tax-exempt basis within about two, maybe three years. And so our question would be, can those, all those dollars really be spent in that time period? I don't have the answer to that, but I think that's, that's another consideration to think about in terms of the size.
Charlotte's nodding no, so I will assume we cannot spend in that period of time. Okay, but just for assumptions sake, then the annual payment or taxes on the real estate would go from about $1.25 to probably somewhere over three?
Yeah, probably, probably in that range, yeah. I mean, roughly speaking on a, on a, if we're going from, from 8 million to about 24 or thereabouts, if we're just talking interest only, you multiply it by about three to get to that.
So last question, probably directed at you and Charlotte, and maybe our wonderful school superintendent. If we do the 8.1 million now, but then we borrow again next year, the 12.5, what's the disadvantage of doing that rather than combining it all now?
Again, it would be how long it would take to spend the funds. So if you have 20 million, 24 million, and you don't get it spent in those two years or three years, then we could end up in an arbitrage situation, which is an IRS penalty that we would have to then pay. So we would have to look at the timing and the capacity to get the projects done, the lead time for procurement, engineering costs and all that, to figure out if it would be in our benefit to do all of it at once if we think we can complete the projects in that time. It's only so much staff to go around on both sides, county and schools, so I just don't want to end up in that IRS penalty situation where we're earning more interest than we're paying out in interest.
No, totally, totally understand that. My, my concern is the longer you wait, the more something costs, because costs go up. So if, if we can find the best-case scenario, like, okay, maybe we can't get $27 million spent, maybe we can get 18 or 20 without ending up on the IRS's bad side. I would like to look at, at a scenario like that to where, you know, we think this is what we can do, this is how much we can spend, because I really hate to, to wait another year to do it. And then, you know, Bidenomics or whatever, Herronomics, whatever kicks in, and then costs go up.
And, and I don't want to speak to Dr. Tygen and all that, but I know there's a timing issue with schools too, that we have to do everything pretty much in the summertime when it comes to roofs and HVAC, because you, you can't have students in there while you're, you know, got the AC off and the roof being worked on. So that also just kind of, it's just the nature of some of how it works with schools. Even the county, we had to, with the village building here, we had to do a lot of shuffling around in order to get it done. So I'm not, I, I understand what you're saying and I don't disagree with it, but I just, I, I don't know that we could actually make that happen, but we will work with the schools to see what they think they can do.
Come up with something before October, just, you know, that kind of scenario. And come on, man, when I went to high school, we didn't have air conditioning.
I didn't either.
Okay, thank you guys so much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Powers.
Help me with the, the arbitrage. If, if we do, you know, in a situation, is there a penalty or we just pay taxes on the, the effort that we've earned?
Usually, you're just going to give back the portion above what they allow you to earn. And so it's, it's not usually a penalty.
It's not a penalty.
Yeah, it's usually just giving back what, what is over and above the threshold that they set out, meaning they, the IRS, that you can't earn.
Okay. And the 8.1, and maybe Dr. Tygen and Mr. Benway can, can give, enlighten us on this. Will the 8.1 allow you to buy all the equipment that you would need for the implementation across both years? I'm led to believe that the lead time on this equipment is rather significant, even if we have to store it. Does the 8.1 handle all the equipment that you're going to need, even if you haven't got time to install it, but to at least order it?
Yeah, Bob Benway, Director of Facilities for the schools. When we put this stuff together, the assumption was that the funds would be available in the, the first of the fiscal year, and that would allow us to do the design work that you're talking about in the late summer, early fall timeframe. And then we could do the procurement of the contract in the, toward the October, December timeframe, which we then get them on contract and in turn allow them to buy the materials. So everything would be set up for that summer install. And, and we're on track for that right now with the high school, because we're, we're, we're doing the design for that right now. However, we're not on track for Pocahontas HVAC system. So to, to make that work, I think with these funds, it would be very, very difficult. I, I reached out to our, our lead engineer, and he said that the time is just getting too short to try and get the, the Pocahontas HVAC system done in the summer of '25. Now, we probably could get the, the demolition work done, because we'll allow that time to actually spill over into the fall timeframe.
So again, will the 8.1 allow you to buy all the equipment you're going to need, even if you have to implement it, actually install it over another year?
Yes, but I, I caution you, because once you purchase the equipment and you have it on site, and that's what you usually have to do when you purchase it, that's when the warranty window also starts.
Okay. So you're saying the 8.1 million is what you need, minimally?
It, it depends on how long we have to spend it, sir. That's the money we need to complete those three projects. But I'm saying that at this point in time, we, we won't be able to complete the Pocahontas HVAC install in the summer of '25.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Kyle, is any chance the, uh, interest rates going to drop while you're doing your work the next, uh, month or two? That's my only question I have for you. The five point oh, the four point five.
There is a chance. There's, there's definitely a chance it could drop.
Oh, there's a chance.
I can't tell you it's gonna happen.
Great.
But yeah, I mean, there's clearly, there's a lot of chatter about that. Uh, the markets tend to try and price that in already. And so a lot of what happens nowadays, they see that news and they try and price that into, to current rates. Um, but, you know, who, who really knows? And, and so again, part of, part of what we're trying to take advantage of here, regardless of the size, is inability to borrow a known quantity of dollars to get some specific projects going. If there's a need to, to relook at the size a little bit, we can definitely do that. We'll, we'll defer to your staff on, on how to do that, um, and certainly work with the schools folks um, to do that. Uh, but clearly, interest rates are, they are very favorable right now.
Yeah. I mean, it says on your paperwork here, the following assumptions were used for planning order of magnitude estimate. So I'm assuming hopefully the interest rate will drop.
Yeah, and to your point, Mr. Chair, we, we, again, we've used five percent as a planning estimate, really four and a half on the one and five on the other. And when the refinancing was just done, um, last month, that rate was like a three forty in that range. That was a little bit shorter. And so for a twenty-year financing, we're probably in around four percent plus or minus, depending on the exact bids and days and who's putting a bid in, so forth, so on.
I'd be happy with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ms. Powers.
On page ten, uh, two, two fifty-eight of ours, ten of yours, um, you mentioned, uh, the Economic Development Authority acting as a conduit issuer.
Yep.
Educate us a little bit on, on, on what you're envisioning the EDA to do and what makes, what makes their involvement unique and what's the benefit from your perspective to the county of dealing with the EDA?
So, so that is a very specific, called codicil of law in Virginia, um, whereby, and it's not unique to Powhatan. This is every, basically every county, um, in the state operates this way. And so the EDA basically serves purely as a conduit issuer. And so we use that term. What that really means is you, the board, are the borrower, the repayment obligation rests with you as a board. Um, the EDA serves really as a purely legal conduit issuer uh, that allows you to borrow through a different act under, under Virginia law. And so uh, there's no financial obligation of the EDA. They aren't responsible for any debt service payments. Um, they don't control any of the borrowed funds nor the projects. It really is there just as a mechanism of how Virginia law is set up. And it's set up that way, um, because the way these do- dollars will be borrowed is through what's called a lease revenue bond. And so the credit for the borrowing, whether it's permanent or interim, uh, will basically be a, what we call a moral obligation pledge of the board of supervisors, like a promise to pay of the board. And on top of that, we'll most likely put a lien or a mortgage on, uh, a county facility um, as additional collateral to the borrower. And so the way you do that is you work through a, anytime you hear that lease concept, you work through the EDA.
Uh, under the law, as you understand it, does the EDA have more flexibility in terms of procurement procedures and rules and regulations that would ease the process and speed it up? Because it can be agonizingly slow.
Um, I'm not a lawyer nor a procurement expert. I don't think so. Um, it, they really are there purely for the, the financing conduit.
Thank you.
More questions for Kyle at this point? Continue on, sir.
All right. Well, Mr. Chair, that, that really on page ten was that, that was the conclusion. And so, uh, I think what we would, um, uh, be looking for, and it's obviously up to the board's discretion, if you'd like us to move forward with this. Um, again, you're not under any obligation to do that right now, meaning, um, if indeed we move forward or bring some things back, it doesn't make sense. You're not on the hook, so to speak, until such time as we bring those bids back and you take an action in October. And so um, really defer to you as a board. Um, we certainly continue, continue moving forward with your staff and talk to the schools folks and kind of get the various processes up and rolling. Uh, but we'll defer to you.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead, Ms. Powers.
Yeah, I, I, just speaking for myself, obviously, I, I would like to move forward. I, what I need to, to, to hear from the schools is between eight point one and, and the twenty-two million, there's a number that is, is going to fit schedules and procurement and, and all the things that have to go into that process. And I don't know what that number is. I don't think it's the full twenty-two. I think it's more than eight-one. So we need, we need more guidance, I guess, probably to pass along to you from, from our colleagues at the school system. If I could just ask one question on, on your page thirteen, just to be clear. Were we to, uh, borrow the full twenty point three and cover the cost for both twenty-five and twenty-six? Um, it would appear to me that the uh, interim financing, because we would do it for the three-year interim, might exceed our ability to fund out of cash flow. Do you concur with that? And it looks to me like it would be up to a three penny impact.
That's correct. That's correct. And again, with the same caveats that
Right.
that assumes you have no other revenue sources and, um, you know, tax bases aren't growing, we're not working within the decline natural in your debt profile. So it's kind of a simplistic way of looking at it, but purposely so to give you that order of magnitude. So the question is, if you did the full twenty million, the, the equivalent impact in terms of real estate tax rate is indeed about three pennies.
And we could do that over those three years. It would, we, we did one penny in twenty-five, two in twenty-six, and then three through twenty-eight.
Yeah, you, you could build some of that up. That's right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Kyle, I look forward to seeing you in October. Thanks, sir.
We look forward to it as well. Thank you.
Get the interest rates down.
Chairman, before he leaves, I, I, let me, let me just do one, one more thing, if you don't mind. Because I think the one chart here that really is, says a, says a lot, if I can find the darn thing, um, is your chart on page thirty-eight or page two eighty-six, because it, it, it's exactly what I asked Brett for, and then I thank you for providing it. Um, because it gives us a, a, a sense of impact of borrowing. And, and that is every ten million dollars borrowed requires eight hundred and twenty-five K in debt service, which equals about one point five pennies per ten million. That gives us a, a kind of a, a sense of what we're doing in terms of that, that hunk of money. So this, this one page is, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for it. It says a lot.
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Brings us to new business.
Look, uh, first is Resolution R twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one. Uh, we received some additional state revenues for schools. Um, so, uh, Superintendent, uh, Tygen can just give a brief summary of, of what that's about and what they plan to accomplish with those extra funds.
Good evening. Yes, we, it, back in, um, around May, we received additional funding from, with the governor's budget that equated to a hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollar increase in state dollars to the school division. At our June eighteenth meeting, we shared with, um, the community exactly what those funds were going for. Um, one of the, you know, as we know through the budget season, there were a lot of things that were on our um, list of things that we felt were needs that did not get funded. And so we went back to that list. And we use the additional funding to, um, hire an assistant director of special education. Um, and that was with benefits. The amount that we had shared at that point was a hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Um, we also added professional development for our both general ed and special education teachers around specially designed instruction as we're still, you know, constantly providing professional development for our teachers. And that was sixteen thousand, five hundred. And then we also, through the reorganization that I did within the leadership team, um, there was some shifting of responsibilities around some of our classified employees, specifically our administrative assistants. And so, um, because of the increase, increased responsibilities on one of the individuals, we had to adjust title and, um, salary to go with that, which was eight thousand dollars. And so that left us with an unallocated amount of forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And that money is just what is, you know, things come up, things that are unexpected absolutely come up within the day-to-day work. And so that money was, is just, um, for that at this point. So that was, that was the additional amount from the state and, and how we applied it aligned with what we felt were our bu- budget initiatives we had presented early on. Happy to answer any specific questions, though.
Any questions?
Me too.
Thank you, Ms. Ty.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, next one, wanted to, uh, report on a safer grant that we are going to be receiving. Um, so, you know, we have something really special going on with the, uh, hybrid, uh, volunteer and paid fire and rescue system that we have here and, uh, you know, do a phenomenal job with that. And a big part of that is just the Powhatan community and our involvement, but, you know, also a big part of it is it takes, it takes money. Um, and our fire and rescue leadership have gone in and, um, brought in. Oh, since it was pulled from consent, yeah.
That's where it was pulled on.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ms. Kenny.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R dash twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one. Um.
Second. Roll call vote.
Mr. Navi?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mrs. Morset?
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for catching that. Um, yeah. So again, back to the safer grant, uh, you know, but also it takes funding to make these things happen. And so our fire and rescue leadership uh, have done a great job in the past of procuring these funds. Um, so now, once again, they've gone out, applied and gotten six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of, uh, grants that will allow us to continue, uh, our phenomenal recruitment retention program through FY twenty-nine. So let, uh, Fire and Rescue Chief Warner say a few words on that grant funding and what we'll be doing with it.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, we're fortunate for the third time to receive this safer grant, which, uh, goes over a four-year period. These, uh, the grant has started. We actually got our first grant in twenty sixteen, and then again, followed up in twenty twenty and now twenty twenty-four. So we're extremely fortunate to have a, a very good grant writer, uh, named Gene Reams, that has helped us with all three grants and been very successful. And we're just shy of two million dollars now over the course of the three grants. And the, the safer grant is for, uh, is actually called for staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. And it's a focus for our volunteer pool of, uh, workforce in, in Powhatan Fire and Rescue. And our, uh, the period will go from twenty twenty-four till twenty twenty-eight. And like, uh, Brett had said, it's six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Uh, and the focus of that money, it's pretty strict on, on the guidelines where we're going to spend it. It's on marketing for recruitment and retention of volunteers, personal protective equipment for our volunteers, ten sets per year, training and conferences for our active volunteers, volunteer incentives and awards, uh, that we offer them each year for our active members. And then new member costs, like, for each new member comes in, we get physicals for them and get a good baseline, uh, medical evaluation for them. And then recruiting, and it also provides the funds for our part-time recruitment or retention coordinator. So we're, uh, extremely fortunate to do this for the third time, uh, and, uh, we're, uh, hopefully it'll continue to keep our volunteer workforce strong. Any questions?
I got one that's very unusual with this every year. We got it three times. So that's, that's a huge. Now we can, now we can applaud, sir. Thank you, Phil.
Uh, then, uh.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, accept a safer grant.
Second. Call favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good deal.
Uh, then next item C, Supervisor Powers, uh, you had request discussion of Route sixty, uh, development standards. So if there, if you want to summarize that.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, I move to initiate and refer to the Planning Commission for its recommendation, amendment to the county's development standards to further enhance setbacks, landscaping, buffering and parking location on Route sixty, Route five twenty-two, Route five twenty-two and seven eleven. And then I would ask the, uh, Planning Commission to, uh, bring back its recommendation to the board honor before our regular meeting in December.
Second. Any discussion? Are you straightforward? Roll call vote?
Yeah, wait, go ahead. Uh, Mr. Navi?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mrs. Morset?
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
And then, uh, per Mr. Powers, page three oh four, based on public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, I move to initiate and refer to the Planning Commission for this recommendation, amendment to the county's development standards to require turn lanes and tapers for new development along primary highways. And I do ask that the Planning Commission return that back to the board within one hundred days.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Navi?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mrs. Morset?
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
It's all new business. Brings us to our second public comment period, three minutes for individuals, five minutes per group. We'll have a thirty-minute, um, time limit, which can be extended, which we will. So first person is Brady Phelps. He spoke in the first. Right? Okay. Bruce Freer?
Uh, good evening. Thank you. My name is Bruce Freer. I live at three seven four four Archie's Way in Branchway Springs. And I just wanted to address the board on this new proposal of the high-density, uh, housing that you're looking at. Um, I think each of you understand, and I don't have to reiterate, but you understand that you were voted in to represent the people of each of, each district in the county of Powhatan. And I think that hopefully that you are still doing that, that you are listening to the residents of Powhatan. Um, I hope it's not going to happen, but I'm asking, uh, is it possible that the residents have the ability to vote on this? To determine whether they really want this in our county? I'm not, I don't know the law. I don't know that, but I'm assuming that we voted you in to represent us. And if you're representing us and representing the majority of everyone in Powhatan County, that the board would vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Paul Swineman?
Um, hello. Uh, um, there was, what, what I'd like to talk about is, uh, two, three, four years ago, there was a sidewalk project that was on Powhatan County's transportation master plan that was proposed to run between the Powhatan High School and South Creek to the South Creek Food Lion. Um, what happened was like in, under the old Board of Supervisors, I think Mike Carme, I think Mr. Carmack took it off the, took it off the master plan. Um, could the Board of Supervisors vote to put that sidewalk project back on the cha- transportation master plan because, um, the side, because the sidewalk project, that proposed sidewalk is now, is going to, is going to run right in front of the proposed ninety-nine homes that's going to go next to the Powhatan High School and the Powhatan, and, and Food Lion. And what they should do is put it back on the master plan so that when the developer comes before the Board of Supervisors with the proposal, they can build the developer to build the new sidewalk, have, have them fully pay for it. Because they did, because they did the pot side, the Michael Potter proffer on having Michael Potter proffer to extend the village sidewalks sixteen hundred feet from the firehouse to his Fighting Creek, to his Fighting Depot development. And he was only building thirty-five units of housing and Powhatan was getting fifty feet of sidewalk per unit. And the fact that this development by Powhatan High School is going to be ninety-nine homes under that system, it could tech, it could technically create three to four times more sidewalk than, um, Michael Potter's Fighting Creek Depot. And I think Powhatan should build, should reinstate that sidewalk project. And I think Powhatan should build, should reinstate that sidewalk project.
Sir? Cindy Booton, was you going to speak again? Cindy? Take your time.
For thirty-four years gave me time to get right old. Anyway, I just wanted to tell you all this so you'll understand how serious I am and how serious the people of Powhatan are about wanting to keep our rural nature. I just completed putting my fifty-five acres of hundred acre, hundred-year-old forest and a small amount of pasture and a conservation easement. And it's about three miles from the village. So developers would love to cut that into pieces, but I've got it protected forever. So please realize we citizens are serious. We really want to keep this place rural. We've paid with our lives. We came out here before the developers and we paid with having to drive an hour to work. We paid with the inconvenience of living so far away from things. And we made that sacrifice willingly because Powhatan had what we wanted. And that's the rural nature. And if you give it up, you'll never get it back. Protect it for all you're worth. Protect it for all of us, our children and our grandchildren. Thank you.
Keith Book, he left, right? Yep. Tammy C?
Hello. Seems I picked a good night to speak. Thanks for letting me. Y'all, I guess I don't want to call anybody out, aren't being good stewards of the money of Powhatan in regards to schools, okay? Do you know how many lawsuits against school Dr. Teagan has in the school itself at the courthouse? Might be worth looking into. You should not just request an invoice, ask for a complete breakdown. Do not give approval for X amount of dollars. Request to see everything from the school and the school board in advance prior to approval. Paying Sands Anderson Law Firm budget two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and is well over that budget. And then hire more central office positions instead of teachers? So why is the budget over only thirteen thousand for homebound services, but yet two hundred and twenty-five thousand for legal services? And like I said, it's already been exceeded this year. Do better. Y'all aren't being told any of the legal matters. So why add four positions in central office when they couldn't even make payroll over summer as it was at a deficit from paying legal fees from all the sped issues and other numerous transfers from numerous accounts? I mean, it's public knowledge. Y'all aren't being given home-based services, taking parents to court with doctors stating needing home-based. Sands Anderson, you're letting them dictate school board as far as writing letters for superintendents and administrators, just to name a few. They're using them way too often. And I agree with most of the audience here. We could easily have any of you unseated just as quickly as we had you seated. We are the Powhatan citizens. And if they want a town hall for the upcoming big projects, then give Powhatan what's needed. Do better. Thank you.
Carolyn Covington?
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Covington and my husband and I live on Academy Road. I'm against any rezoning being done to accommodate high-density housing. In the August Board of Supervisors workshop meeting, affordable housing was referenced as a top priority that the county should be addressing. The housing crisis is something being felt nationwide, globally even. It's certainly not something that Powhatan of all places has the infrastructure to address. Leave it to the cities and suburbs that have the existing infrastructure in place to handle necessary growth. The only argument I've heard in favor of high-density housing is from those who wish their adult children could afford to live here after being raised here. My husband was raised here, too. And we spent years saving up to purchase our house here in Powhatan. Anyone wanting to purchase property here can do the same. There are always houses below the median price point for sale, several at any given time. Adding hundreds more homes and a high-density development will only attract people here from other areas, straining our finite resources. For anyone thinking that developments of this nature will open up the opportunity for homeownership for those it's currently out of reach for, these homes are going to be sold for market value, which tells me they're going to be overly crowded, poorly built, cookie-cutter homes, thrown together as quickly as possible to make the developer, the developers as much money as possible. You've all seen other developments of this nature being sold for exorbitant prices in neighboring counties. I'd like to point out just one of the flawed metrics being used to assure us that Powhatan can accommodate these rezoning requests. With one hundred and fifty homes being proposed near Branchway and ninety-nine being proposed near Batterson, the proposals assume just one child for every three homes or a total of eighty students for a whopping two hundred and fifty homes. Common sense would tell all of us in the room that that doesn't add up. Undoubtedly, housing developments in Powhatan will attract families with children, plural, not singular, seeking out our strong school system. This has the potential to push us to a tipping point, forcing the construction of additional schools, which is an immense investment and long-term expense that will fall on the taxpayer, the current taxpayers that you've been elected to represent the best interests of. Speaking of who you are representing, there are donations that were made by project stakeholders to the twenty twenty-three Board of Supervisors campaigns that I think would raise eyebrows for everybody in this room, considering the sudden and urgent push to contradict the twenty twenty-one future land use map. The owners of Coonwell LLC are attempting to bend the rules and develop a county that they don't live in, pay taxes in, or have a vested interest in. If they think this sort of development is so great, they should do it in their backyards, not ours. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in the second public comment period?
Rebecca Worley with the Virginia Department of Transportation. I just wanted to provide clarification on the traffic count data that's being taken on Page Road that was mentioned earlier. That traffic data is being collected for potential pole-mounted speed display signs that are being considered on Page Road. So it's actually speed data. It's not related to truck traffic. And our traffic engineering staff confirmed to me this evening that it'll be collected for a forty-eight-hour period of time. And just for comparison purposes, annual traffic count data that's collected just for traffic volumes is typically collected on a twenty-four to seventy-two hour period of time. So it is in keeping with our, our guidance for traffic counts. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Don Rissmeyer, thirty-five, twenty-three, Richards Run. Thank you for your, three minutes of your time. I wanted to touch base first on the chronology of the online petition. We did have two, I had two meetings personally with Mr. Powers. We probably spent about four hours together. The first meeting was asked for by his campaign manager at the time, Eleanor Hertzler. We met for an hour and a half. The conclusion at the end of the meeting was that his mind is made up already. We also had discussions at that meeting about the water in the sewer systems. And Mr. Haggy and others were very generous with their time. Mr. Powers also met with us. We had a probably over an hour conversation, I would say, about water and sewer. So we did spend about four hours on this before this petition started, just so you know. We had a neighborhood meeting, everybody unanimously thought and told me that the decision was already made. I do not believe that. I believe this board is going to make a decision based on the merits of the project. And I look forward to that discussion, and I know it's not till October. So I know there's a lot being said tonight, but there are a lot of people very concerned. We went from thirty-five people that signed at that meeting, a petition that was in writing, to deciding to go with an online petition. We did the reverse emails because our webmaster said that was a good thing to do. I understand that there are some concerns about the number of emails. The reason we did that was so that everybody would know that these are real signatures. We have real IP addresses. I have met hundreds of people in Powhatan County. I've been here twenty-five years. Half of the people that spoke tonight I had never met before this month. So I'm very appreciative of their time and their energy to try to really make it clear why we oppose this. And everybody has their own opinion. This is not group think. Everybody has their own opinion. Nobody's getting the email addresses except me. We, we have twelve hundred and fifty signatures. The petition is going to stay live. And we're going to continue to get the information out through the Powhatan Noes website. If there's anything on there that's not factual, feel free to send a comment to the website and it'll be received and cleaned up. But that is all factual information as far as I know. It has not changed since the minute it was posted six weeks ago. The number one reason to oppose this is the Village Center Plan Development zoning designation. That's for the village. It's, has no business on Route sixty. That is an entire town hall meeting. If, if we want to have a discussion about zoning and future land use in the comp plan, I think that alone could be a reason to get together with concerned citizens. And maybe, maybe we're missing something. Maybe there's something about the comp plan where rural living includes high-density residential. I don't think we're missing that. Somebody else is missing that. That, that is not something that Powhatan is ready for. In the strategic planning session this week, I watched the whole session. Basically, we don't have time to talk about the strategic planning session. Let me just say, we would like to talk about this, whether it's a town hall meeting or one-on-one meetings at Starbucks or whatever. Anybody voting on this for the Planning Commission or the board wants to know, please reach out. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd say you want to close second public comment period. County Administrator comments?
Now, just again, to remind people, September fourteenth, the nine eleven and first responders memorial events come out. That's it.
County Attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Board comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Denali?
I just wanted to personally thank everybody for the comments, for those that are still here. We definitely appreciate it. It means a lot to be heard and we're, we're listening. So we thank you for that.
Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ms. Kenny.
So I echo Mr. Denali's comments. I will be doing a general topic town hall on September tenth in this building from six thirty to eight. I welcome anybody that's interested. You can come and ask me any question you want. Again, it's not topic-specific. But I just, I just feel we're at, we're at a time where somebody needs to just listen. So I'd appreciate you coming.
What else?
Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Powers?
I've been struggling with this and based on some of the comments tonight, I, I've decided to go ahead and speak my mind here, if you would allow me to do that. There's been a number of questions asked and innuendos suggested concerning my honesty and the activities that I've been involved in. And I want to go on record now to tell you and set the record straight. I moved to Powhatan County in twenty nineteen. My wife and I bought a spec home that was already built. And when I moved here, when we came here, I did not have any notion or any relationship with anyone in Gray Ridge Builders. I simply bought a home from them. And a year later, I contracted with them to build me a garage. I get to know them fairly well through that process, as you would with anybody that's doing building for you. And grew to appreciate their honesty and their forthrightness and their commitment to this county. And the, specifically the Winalls are involved in the development that we've been discussing. And I'd like to make it clear that at least on the Winall family, have been four generations in Powhatan County. So they're not outside the county. They're, they're county people that have been here for four generations. Relative to donations that I've received, it's public knowledge. Anybody that wants to go to the state board of elections, everyone that ran for office must declare every penny that was ever donated to them. And you can read about mine and anyone else on this board, past, present, and future. So it is public knowledge. I did receive a donation from Gray Ridge Builders. However, that was done far before any discussion was had about any of the projects, whether it be the CC zoning from ATAN or the CC to the current request. But it was not even, not even on their radar and was certainly not on mine. No obligations were requested from them. None were given. And had anybody been requested, I would have told them to keep their money and go their very way. I did appoint Mrs. Winall to the Planning Commission. I did so because I came to respect her intellect. She's a degreee architect and graphics designer. And in the process of discussion, many discussions with her, I came to realize that she had a very considerable knowledge of the ordinances, zoning subdivision ordinances in this county. And I felt that she would comport herself well. And if there was a conflict of interest, she would recuse herself from deliberations and from voting, and she will do so. I also accepted and have been accused of doing something underhanded in that I accepted a private donation from Chris Schust, who is with Balzer. Again, that donation was made prior to any of the discussions of any of these, these rezoning requests. And again, there was no obligations requested, none, and when none were offered. I did appoint, as I said, Mrs. Winall to the Planning Commission. And as I've said, I just came to appreciate her capabilities. And I must say that in observing her on the Planning Commission, she's not disappointed me one iota. And yes, I also was one single vote that resulted in Mr. Schust being appointed to the Economic Development Authority. That, the EDA has had, has had no involvement in any of the rezoning applications, nor would they unless, I suppose, requested by staff or by the rest of the board. So you, you may not agree with positions I take. That's your right. I respect that. But I want you all to know that I have done nothing illegal, immoral, nor have I done anything to betray the trust that was instilled in me, that was given to me, and I would never do so. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. I would like to also thank everyone that spoke tonight. I really, it was well-taken. Thank y'all. Close session? Nope. Meeting adjourned.